Motion to go on the executive session.
Motion, second.
I'll be going to the second session.
All right.
So it's got a second. All the papers are coming up. All right, now we need to certify the executive session, certificate of executive session, whereas the town council for the executive session on this day is recorded vote and recorded with the provisions to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas 2.1-3.4.1 in the code of Virginia required certification by this council of executive session was conducted in conforming with Virginia law. Now therefore being resolved, the town council hereby certifies the best three members of knowledge, one, only public business matters, while they exempted from open media requirements by Virginia law, were discussed in the executive session, which the certification resolution applies. And two, all such public business matters, as were identified in the motion to be made in the session, were considered by the town council. So I need a roll call. Vote for the certified. Vice Mayor Beasley.
Aye.
Councilmember Fines.
Aye.
Councilmember Fox.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Aye.
Okay, so we're now down to executive session. There were no public details to discuss. The next, we're going to jump into the joint public hearing with the planning commission. The notice is hereby given that on Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, at 7:15 p.m. in the council chambers of the municipal building for the Town of Tassau, located at 211 Central Avenue in Tassau, Virginia. The Town of Tassau Council and the Town of Tassau Planning Commission will hold a joint public hearing pursuant to Virginia Code 15.2-2204, Town Charter sections 3 through 8, and Town Code section 24-6, to provide the citizens of the town an opportunity to be heard with respect to a proposal for the town to revise Chapter 24 subdivisions of the code of the Town of Tassau in order to amend certain provisions of Article 1 regarding definitions applicable to subdivisions and platting, and Article 3 regarding platting criteria, and the procedural requirements for survey plat submission and approval. Copies of the proposed ordinance amendment is available for review and inspection during normal business hours, 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. at the Town of Tassau Municipal Building, as referenced herein at 8:00. So, Leanne, could you give me a little background on this? For Chris, or someone?
Brad.
Brad?
Me too. It's basically a revision to the subdivision where it's a deal with platting. There have been some issues that have come up in the last six months or so, when we found that the current platting ordinance we had does not really make itself useful for purposes of doing small local cost property divisions between two parcels, or a boundary adjustment, or a house location. The ordinance was drafted back in 19, and adopted back in 1967, which has a lot of very cumbersome detail incorporated into it, as if you were doing a wholesale subdivision, like Harmon from Buskle, relative to what plat was required to put all the detail and information on that, which made it very onerous on surveyors, and also difficult for private owners who were just trying to do an adjustment for a boundary for an encroachment at someone's house. You had to go through all these provisions, or else the plat would be actually not approvable by the manager or recordable theoretically. It's been happening a lot anyway, in terms of what the clerks have been recording. We're trying to clean that up, and by virtue of this ordinance, there's a lot, there's a lot there that goes into it. It basically simplifies the recording, the preparation, recording, or preparation, approval, and recording process for our, for Chris, earlier I was under administrator for the manager, and then also then for the clerks, as to what is necessary for approving a simple, what would be called, simple subdivision plat, as opposed to a subdivision development plat. Yes, it's a lot to try to do all that, but in order to clean up all those different code sections, and it is an entire article it required going through, and making those individual changes to make it work, where it gives the manager more authority, not autonomy, which just makes it easier for her and for her son administrator, and local engineers, and then property developers to be able to do that.
That's what I was saying.
It's a lot, and you'll see, and I'm gonna have to read the order, y'all hope it won't put everybody to sleep, but it's a lot in there to try to clean it up for, for Chris and for Leanne particularly.
Okay. Well, thank you. Is there anybody from the public up here to speak at this public hearing? If, if not, then we're going to close the joint public hearing, and we will start the regular town council meeting in nine minutes. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for attending tonight's town council meeting. If you'd please stand for the pledge of allegiance and dedication.
We are the flag of the United States of America, and to the very right of it, which stands "One Nation, Under God, and Invisible, with Liberty and Justice for all."
President, can we just...
Sure thing. Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you so much that we can gather tonight, that we have attendance, that we have willing participants. Thank you for those that are observing, asked for the meeting to, to go smoothly, that voices be heard, decisions be made the right way. We thank you so much, and we have a place to gather and gather for you. In Jesus' name, amen.
All right, first under special presentations and requests, I'd like to call Mr. Joe DiAmato up to the front. I know he loves this, sending a smile. So, Joe, I'm, I'm gonna read this, read this out. You've done something that's made us all really proud. The commendation for heroism presented to Joe DiAmato. The Town of Tassau proudly recognizes Mr. Joe DiAmato for his extraordinary courage and selfless heroism displayed on June 22nd, 2025, on the New River in the vicinity of Narrows, Virginia. His actions exemplified the highest ideals of community spirit and bravery, and we are honored to acknowledge his profound impact. On the afternoon of June 22nd, 2025, in the vicinity of Narrows, a perilous situation unfolded on the swift waters of the New River. At approximately 350 yards distance, an overturned kayak was spotted, indicated, and, and immediate emergency. Without hesitation, Mr. DiAmato and his companions maneuvered the raft downstream into the treacherous currents to assess, assess the situation. They discovered an elderly woman in grave danger trapped in, in the current and clutching the branches of a downed tree. Recognizing the critical nature of the situation and the immediate threat to the woman's life, Mr. DiAmato made a courageous decision to risk his own. He selflessly jumped from his boat into the powerful current, swimming through the rapids, to reach the embankment. From there, he skillfully navigated over numerous boulders, reaching the downed tree where the woman was ensnared. Mr. DiAmato positioned himself securely within the tree, and despite the hazardous conditions and strong current, secured the distressed woman for approximately 10 minutes. His unwavering resolve and fiscal endurance in the face of such danger were instrumental in preventing further harm. His heroic efforts continued until a civilian fishing boat was able to safely maneuver into a position where the woman could be successfully retrieved from the river. Mr. DiAmato's actions on June 22nd, 2025 demonstrated exceptional bravery, quick thinking, and unshakable commitment to human life. His willingness to put himself in harm's way to save another is a testament to his remarkable character and a shining example for our entire community. The Town of Tassau extends its deepest gratitude and profound admiration to Joe DiAmato for his actions, or for his act of heroism. His courageous intervention undoubtedly saved the life and brings immense pride to our town. Awarded this 8th day of July, 2025. So moving to the next item, we have the Tassau Football League's support request. Shane Carroll, I'm more.
Good evening.
Hello.
Little nurse.
That's all right.
So, hi, my name is Drake Warren. I'm the vice president of the Tassau Football League. We are seeking funds for our youth in the area. We have a policy of no child left behind. Many children in the area are unable to pay registration fees. So as a league, we blunderize all year to make sure that we try to get everybody equipment, but unfortunately, we have not, so we are still trying to seek money to get newborns' equipments for both football and cheerleading. So we believe that by doing this, we encourage every child to make sure they have a good opportunity to play football or cheer, and making sure they are not a mess. This is what I did.
I think it's good.
Thank you.
How many kids do you have in the program?
We have 105 boys, and we have 67 girls. It gets bigger every year.
That's a great turnout.
Yes.
It went from three football teams and three cheerleading teams to five of each this year. The exact count and our two flag football teams.
I know you're in trouble a lot.
Yes. We traveled from Virginia High to go to Bristol, to go to Finch River, Bridgeview, of course, Richlands, Homemaker. This past weekend, we was in Homemaker. We had a Gennery there, where we was there all day, basically, and, you know, playing football and cheering, so.
This is all volunteer, right?
Yes.
Can I say something real quick?
No. So what's the formula? Do you have a formula?
So the formula is up to, this is 172 participants. That would put us in the $100 to $900 range. Is, is the number on there, it's one of the things we tried to do, and it's because we're confined by the tax revenue that we raise in town, but it says that you have 90 that are within town limits. Is that accurate, or is it closer to the 172 number?
90.
90 participants that live within town.
Oh, no, all of them within town.
Yeah, we all, they all live within town. Yeah.
Okay, and this is going towards uniforms, is it going towards pads and equipment, stuff that can be used over multiple years? Okay, and at the end of the season, they, they turn it in.
They turn it back in and then reissue.
Reissue, yeah.
Want to make a motion?
Yeah, we're, we're within the guidelines. I'll make a motion to go 900.
900, I'll second that.
So I've got a second for 900, and, or any discussion?
I think this is a great cause. I think it's reusable over the years, right? Because it's very equipment and stuff like that. You know, like you said, it's, it's a great, great practice to have kids out there involved in sports, team sports, and try to build the future of our town with leaders. So, yeah, I'm on board.
So it's got a second. So all the papers, that means $900 to the Tassau Football League. Call it. All right.
Thank you all so much.
You're welcome. So next on the agenda is the Billy Wagner Park Support Request. The Billy Wagner Park Committee.
Good evening. I'm Chris Brad Pye, 769 Main Street. And this is passing night, not as the town's attorney, but as a member of the Billy Wagner Park Committee, who was basically undertaking, undertaking the project of having a statue, basically installed for Billy Wagner on the mini park grounds here on Main Street. Our request is not so much as for a donation, it's one for a capital contribution toward the renovation of the park. Our total plan to raise for this project is to raise 250,000 off of this park. That includes from the ground up in terms of renovation of the park itself, in terms of rehabilitating the, the park itself, taking it down to ground level, and rebuilding up with the brick part direction of the statue itself, bronze statue there for Billy, and to basically bring the park up to, to a status that it hasn't had since we've really had parks since. Sarah Brothers' building was torn down in the 90s. As you all are aware, and that park has gone through various iterations, and of course, the last 25, 30 years since the building was torn down, we've had the former Tassau High School replicant was there for state's purposes. That unfortunately is gone. Congress mentioned, spent a debt, it's not there anymore. Two different murals that were installed there, both of which are now gone. Various renovations that happened in terms of, I think, some landscaping, and other, so the kiosk that was there, all have never had any state power. So this idea for the park, it's not only recognized, something that was a, literally a one in a million thing for one of our local native sons to be able to accomplish, to recognize him, but do it such a way to also bring some revitalization back to Main Street, so that piece of property. So with our budget, I think I provided that to council members earlier this week, it is a lot, what we're looking to do. The statue itself is going to run $150,000 for the sculptor, and for materials and for engineering, stainless steel, bronze, going into that. We've argued, and I entered into a contract with her, I say "we," meaning the IBA, has done that, to make this a reality. It's all going to be one where, as members of the committee, there are 10 of us, that have taken it upon ourselves to raise this money. It's not going to be where we're looking for any particular tax dollars for the purpose of raising money for the statue, but in this respect, it is going to be one where this is going to be a capital improvement to Main Street, which we hope to be able then to utilize, one, not just for this year, or next year, but for the next 23, 24 years to come, and hope for beyond, relative to this investment into a town piece of property. The way we're looking at this in terms of our fundraising, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but one of the things that I put before, we put to you all, in terms of what we have to raise initially, of course, we have the price for the actual sculpture itself, and the arts fees, which we have a schedule of payments which will occur, of course, the next 14 months, to make that happen. But in doing so, we have several different levels of funding, and we are going to be going to individuals, businesses, and for grant funding. And that's where this ask to the town for the IBA is, if we can have a, basically a contribution from the town, 10% of what we're trying to raise, just $25,000 in this case, we would use that as a springboard for all of our grant funding that we could have, to make an ask from various foundations like Thompson, Shaw, Rapples, to ensure the grants. With the IBA's involvement as a tax exempt organization, it makes our ability to raise grant funds, all of them feasible, if we had behind, the town behind us. And so what we are seeking, in order to get that off the ground, we've already started raising money, actually within the last, let's start with Main Street funds. We raised our first $1,000, able to pay our first down payment toward our sculptor with money we raised already. So this, we might even go toward the capital improvements to the mini park, and we're asking that the town supports some of that. Any questions about what we're doing and how we're doing it? What do we have to ask for?
One of the things, when looking through your email, that I was curious about, I see the organizations that you're going after for funding, with foundations from Virginia, the Skews Foundation. Out of these organizations, do you know whether or not that they'll support monuments? A lot of these foundations will sometimes be like, depending on the project, they may or may not support it. Have, have, has your team looked into that? And then the second question is, is there a timeline for these? I'm trying to understand the timeline of the project better, for when it, we're looking to build it, you know, in the mini park, and then also for when these specific grants are going to be applied for?
They're perhaps going to be applied for immediately. We're trying to do this in two different grant cycles, in terms of 25, 26, and 26, 27 cycle. And we're actually looking to have the project completed by October of 26th, so therefore we're making an ask of these foundations, both in this fiscal year, 25, 26, and 26, 27. Do we have any guarantees that they are going to support the projects of this? No, we do not. But it's one where, based on the uniqueness of this project, the utility that it serves in terms of being sort of an example of recognizing someone who's not done something that is just something that you have once in a year, it's once in a, beyond, once in a lifetime. In terms of what Billy Wagner accomplished, you're looking at, if you look at the statistics, it was 1% of the kids who go out and play baseball can make it to the major leagues, just 1% all across the country. So that's one, and that, and roughly through the last 80 to 100 years they had baseball, there'd been 23,000 major leaguers. So that's one in about a million, in terms of all the kids that played. And you look at how many kids actually didn't make it to the major leagues and actually go to the Hall, it goes into one and maybe 200, in terms of odds. It's a big, unique accomplishment for someone, a local native son, to be able to do that. So we're going to try to plan out as much as possible to recognize the incentivization of, to kids always, really, but from around here specifically. So you think they'd be, they'd work hard and stick to those, you know, those principles that Billy had, perseverance, that it would be an example for the generations to come. Now, will that be a very set on point? We don't know. We hope it will be, and we hope that will work for us, and be able to, to have these foundations to get on board with us. This is something that is a regional, once in a lifetime event, that we think they would find worthy to support. I know the few in particular, I've talked with one of the Rappel Foundation, I know is definitely behind what we're doing.
Right.
But this is talking, but I've also been talking personally with someone, the Skews Foundation. The others, we're still, we won't know. But we feel like if we had the town and the IBA behind us on this, with the initial principle as a matching element to it, that will help our cause and make it happen.
Once we get away from the statue, and has it probably been checked by...
It has. That was one of the first things we expended on, Councilmember Fox. We actually have incurred, at this point, our contract is for, we thought it was going to run about $5,000, having engineering study done. It turned out to be that the actual cost was a little bit less than that, so we're a little bit underplanted, at least in terms of what we're planning for. But we did have, of course, sampling done by Flyhouse Engineering, it was completed three weeks ago, and the site is perfect for what we want to have done there. The statue itself is going to run with the granite and bronze and stainless steel, roughly about a ton to a ton and a quarter. In terms of actual weight, the actual parts, we can still, you know, see about having put in place, it's not going to be anything, in terms of load bearing, it's not going to be anything problematic for that lot. I know there was some concern about where Sarah Brothers was there before, that material got dumped back into the site, instead of having any type of spill or, or stone, and in the course of, excuse me, the corduroys, samples were in, and over, it's, for what we plan to have there, it's not going to be a physical problem. So that is one bill we've already got to, got to pay, and we're working on getting that one taken care of.
And I think it's, you know, unique in this situation that you are going after large corporate donors as well. And in that outreach, have you received any positive feedback from any of the large corporate donors, or have those letters been submitted yet?
Yes and no, answer your question. We've already talked, again, locally Walmart has already told us they're behind what we're wanting to do, to give as an example. We're planning on going, at this stage, for as big as Rawlings Baseball, New Air Baseball Caps, brands of Billy themselves use, and we're not actually, we haven't, we're not going after anything from, from Billy himself, but those will be, I said, New Air, Rawlings, your local soccer clubs, Nike, ESPN, Dick's Sporting Goods. We're going to go, we're going to knock on every door. It's going to be a matter of not, what door, it's not going to be knocked on, it's just where, where's the next one?
Right.
We're going to be going after everyone, both locally, regionally, and nationally, to see what we can be able to get the support for this. We're looking to raise enough money, not only to actually have the lot prepared, statues there, but also to raise enough money to have, for this one to be, for lack of a better word, an endowment, or money left aside for, for future maintenance of the park. So this is something that can be utilized, again, not only just to recognize Billy Wagner, but also for events that are there on, on Main Street, any parade, Christmas time, the Little League's sport walk they have for the opening day of Little League, all those things will still be happening there in the morning, something that's going to be looked at as a sense of pride and honor for Tassau, for Tassau County in southwest Virginia, so.
Yeah, last, when Ms. Cherry came up, spoke to us, June, I think it was, but she, she had asked for, you know, if we did have any comments on it or recommendations. Haven't watched, and it's fantastic to see him delivering his Hall of Fame speech, and you see the Tassau pin right there, there representing, you know, where he played ball.
He had three pins on. He had one for Fairham, one for the Hall of Fame, and one for Town of Tassau, the Hesse. And that's one of the things with regard to, really, it's been a capital trigger. One of the features we have, at least in planning for the park, of course, we're selling papers, or brick, they're actual bricks, we have a spot for $8,000. Anyone would like to buy one. But one of these features will be behind the statue, it's going to be positioned in the front, what I was thinking, from each, in terms of orientation of it in the northeast corner, which we write on Main Street and Marion Avenue. The center of the park, what we want to have in the center, is a five by five array with the Town of Tassau seal in the middle of it. In terms of, say, five by five, little 12-inch, these are actually granite papers that will have a Tassau seal. And we're making the same presentations, we're making the same presentation for the county. We'd like to have the county be on board as well, for that same reason, to make it, because this is a, a southwest Virginia property that's native to us. Billy, I mean, he showed it, that pin, he showed where his, his heart was, and he mentioned us. He, of course, in his speech, he talked about Lou, and he talked about his Tassau High School Bulldogs, and that's why, it's such, you know, and the tribe's for us to make this happen is a, a regional project that's definitely one for the Town of Tassau, and that's why it's important for us to have here on Main Street.
In that speech, one of the recommendations I was going to have, it's particularly like right at the end of the speech, but he delivers a pretty inspirational quote.
Yes.
And I think that that should be demoralized, in that project, if you can find a way.
Well, there, there are thoughts behind it. There are a couple of things we had in mind, and his speech is one that's definitely, talks about perseverance, and never giving up, and reaching for any goals you ever make to get it happen. He talks about that, and there's, I've watched his speech a couple, at least three times now, with that same idea in mind, but for the, for the granite base. He will be at least our plan, he'll be on a three by seven by three granite base, and then he'll be 10, 10 inches up above that, actually on a simulated mound, like a bronze, and there's plenty of room for that type of inscription on the bottom. And then if you want to be our large corporate donor, we can, for us, for us, back at the bottom, as you've given us $100,000.
So we started off...
New, new business, right? No, I think it's fantastic that, that the community's rallying around, like, this concept and honoring, and I definitely want to make sure, like, too, that we, we can do a resolution of support.
For sure.
For sure. And the other thing, you know, we are down one council member, and then we also have another council member who's out on this 20, 20-year anniversary, and for respect of representing everybody's voices here, I think we want to table the idea on the funding for this evening, but recognizing your schedule of obligations that are coming up, our next meeting will be before that, but in order to give appropriate representation to it, that we could, we can make that decision, table it for this evening, give a resolution of support, and then make that decision prior to that, that allocation.
I think that's perfect. We appreciate that.
Our next meeting is September the 9th, so we'll have time.
Yeah, our next, our actual next payment for our, our sculptor is the 15th of September, so. She is all... so she is already, even though we've only paid her the initial thousand dollars, she's already purchased eight thousand dollars worth of copper and materials to get started. She was very excited, we were showing the support from the meetings with council, it turned out on Main Street that they came to for Main Street moments, and the enthusiasm that was there behind it, they were very much inspired that this was going to be a successful project, they want to be a part of. And so we sent them the signed agreement just two weeks ago, they were already getting started. Any other questions?
You know, electrical, how long are you going to pay?
We're looking at least, and I apologize, I got to be hurried, because we're down here for an early apartment meeting, I was going to bring Manny Billy with us so the public could see him as well. He's not, anybody wants to see him, he's in my front window of my office, the little Manny Billy's, but he's dumb. And the big Billy's in my front window as well. But, Councilman Fox, what we look to do, at least preliminary, our thoughts were to have what I call carers lighting, very similar to what we have on Main Street, except at a much lower level, and it would be lamps probably about a foot tall, ten of them, four on each side, one in the back, one in the front. That would be illuminated, of course, dusted on, and they would be small enough, though, to illuminate the park at all hours of darkness. It'd be, in terms of being aesthetically, I think, very pleasing to the rest of Main Street, matching Main Street, but then leaving the wall of the Thomas Building available for continued use for events like movie viewing and things like that. We're, we still have, as an idea, a phase two, is to have a mural on that wall relative to Billy's accomplishments from Little League all the way through his major league career. That's still, that's another project for another day. We want, only bite off, as much as we're biting off now that you, we are with this, so that's a thought for another day. The electrical on that, what I have on board, to answer your question, I have, not only the installation, but also for the actual price. Again, their estimates, and that's why I have those ampersand sign those certain numbers, we do not have definitive figures, but those are all based on what research we have for everything from electrical wiring, contractor costs, and materials to.
Two more questions? So from my understanding, is we're going to have a motion to table until all council members have the opportunity to discuss, then it will have an answer at the next council.
Do you need a motion for a resolution of support?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Make a motion for a resolution of support. I'll second.
All right. Got a second and discussion. On favor for a resolution of support for the Billy Wagner Park statue, stay so by same name?
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by same name?
Resolut.
Resolut. Discuss. Thank you. So next is the New Day Recovery Program Southwest Virginia Community Health Systems, Megan Jones and Felicia Williams. Oh, sorry, sorry, I jumped again, I slipped. Sorry. I put a check mark before I was there. So Oktoberfest Support Request, Pam B., executive director of the Tazewell County Chamber of Commerce. Hello.
Hello. He's a tough act to follow.
Those lawyers are something. I'm sorry.
Well done. Thank you for being on the agenda tonight. First of all, I want to say we appreciate everything the town does for the channel. I mean, those guys are always so helpful to us, and the town is always so supportive, and I just want to say how much we all appreciate that. Our Oktoberfest is going to be on Saturday, October the 4th, 5 to 10 p.m. This event attracts a lot of people, and a lot of people outside of the area to support our hotels and our restaurants, so it's a pretty big deal. This year, we have not only the Oktoberfest, but the Wayfair is going to have a pre-party from 1:00 to 5:00. Back of the Dragon is going to have an after-party from 10:00 to midnight. So the event itself is actually a bit extended and by the help of our local businesses. We're having a lot of activities on Main Street and really extending the activities this year. The entertainment is going to be The Chain, which is a Fleetwood back tribute band, along with our, I'm still cooking. And the neat thing about the tribute band this year is Stevie Nicks so happens to be touring at the same time that our Oktoberfest is on. So hopefully, whatever PR she gets for the tour, make people think, oh, okay, you know, let's go see this. So that should bring a little bit more attention to our headliner this year. There's going to be a lot of vendors and breweries, and of course, we'll be promoting our own restaurants during the time as well. So the reason I'm here is to ask for your sponsorship. Last year, you all did a $500 sponsorship, which we very much appreciated, and we ask that, you know, to keep, you know, to keep helping and support us with that again. It's an expensive event, and so, you know, we can use all of the help we can get, but we appreciate your consideration on this. Have any questions?
Do we know what attendance was last year?
Oh, you know, I don't, it was, I'm not real sure. I'm sorry, I couldn't tell you the information. I think I sent it to Zach and got it together, but I just don't remember what it is. But last year, we had no good attendance at the event town previously for various reasons, COVID.
Weather.
Weather, or, you know, the weather about killed, and then last year, we really started to kick back and have a really good attendance, and we expect that again this year.
I'm not going to be able to pull it real quick. But it's a growing, and it is going to be on Main Street, right?
It is going to be on Main Street, and like I said, we're going to be extending it a little further down Main Street, causing some of the other activities, so.
And we could wait for everybody in there to kind of not keep them out?
So that we can make sure that we include everyone.
Well, you know, I attend this event regularly, and I see the travel orders that we get from out of town that come into this, and it's a very successful event, and I do like how you're drawing in more businesses and it's extending, you know, without causing more, you know, the events down that way are not going to be causing more, costing more to the town, you know, with room closures and anything like that. I think the event's a great event, I think it's great for tourism, I think it's great for the town, and I think we should, I'll make a motion to support at $500.
I'll second.
So we have a second and discussion. So on favor, $500 donation to the Oktoberfest event, stay so by same name?
Aye.
All opposed, stay so by same name?
Thank you very much.
So, now, New Day Recovery Program Southwest Virginia Community Health Systems, Work Systems, Megan Jones and Felicia Williams.
Actually, Megan Dome, someone did a typo on my name, it's out there in the crowd, and it wasn't anyone's fault over here. I'm on our marketing department. Yes, so I'm Megan Dome, I'm our community of hope coordinator at New Day Recovery. This is Felicia, she's our healthcare navigator. So New Day Recovery is an office-based addiction treatment center that we have here in Tazewell, and a lot of people know about us. We're hidden in the hospital, the Curioan Hospital up on the hill. So we're an outpatient facility that offers group therapy, individual therapy, and family therapy to those that suffer with substance use support. So last August, we were given two grants to expand our services that include healthcare navigation and peer support. With this, we are in a process of creating a community of hope, which is where I come in. We want to have a safe space for people to come, to not be judged, and get onto the streets here in Tazewell. The goal is to have access to services that just means the basic things that you and I take for granted, like getting a shower, having clean clothes, having a kitchen, all of those things. We also provide transportation services to these individuals, which have been huge in our community. So we also have a walk zone vending machine for anyone, not just our patients, anyone in the public that needs Narcan, come get it from us. And, let's see, we also have Amanda's Closet, which is gently used clothing, hygiene products, food, again, open to the public. If anyone that needs those needs, please send them to us. So the reason that we're here today is in September, we are hosting a recovery walk for those that suffer prediction, we're asking for support from the town, not monetary support. We just want people to show up and, you know, our community to see that we care about the people that are in recovery and positively promote recovery. This event, we have vendors that are coming, I believe the Department of Health is planning to bring their medical unit over, different resources as far as Central Valley Community Action, Curioan's coming, yes. So we've extended invitations, and we really hope that you all can support our people.
Do you have the date, time?
Yes, it's September 29th from 12 to 2 at the Lincoln Shire Park. Does anyone have any questions for us about the event or our programing here?
Your program, are you part of Curioan, or are you just co-located with them?
So we are co-located with them, we actually are under an umbrella of Southwest Virginia Community Health Systems, which is our primary healthcare clinic here in Tazewell, which is on the hill below us. They didn't have enough room for us, so they put us up on the hill, which is completely acceptable, so. Just to give you guys an idea, when we got these grants last year, we started with like 20 patients, 25. Now, within a year, we're already up to 47, so we've already outgrown that space just in the short time we've been there.
Any questions?
Sitting over there.
But we're here to help if you all know anyone struggling with addiction, please send them to us, we're here to help and be that person.
I'm forward to doing it.
Last thing, do you have any contact information?
Yes, we brought that, we brought flyers if you're involved in them, so I know who to leave them with.
Yeah, you can put my calendar and grab it. Thank you. Well, thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank you guys for letting us have a seat.
Thank you. Is that a band, how's the company website?
Okay, moving right along. Next is our Tazewell Today Summer Send Off and Winter Market Event Request. Mr. Nate Thomas, President of Tazewell Today.
I didn't know until today that I was doing this, and so I'm not prepared at all.
You'll do it great, though.
Right, and you have a question in front of you, so what do I need to say or do?
My question is, on the summer send-off, whose the target audience on that?
Families.
Okay. I'm not posting, like, you know, because I was responsible for something, I just thought it was interesting. I heard summer send-off, I was thinking students in school, and I was like, well, appropriately, we've got, you know, ABC license, so it's actually not a problem.
I think that is towards the door lights, it just allows people, for example, to buy drinks at one restaurant and go outside and walk around on the street and doesn't it interfere? That's what that's towards, I don't think it's very well explained, but that's the basis.
Summer send-off to our summer visitors on the, on the roads and trails, and they go out, so, I mean, I.
So is this, this isn't, is this more, I'm not seeing like an amount request, or more of a road closure?
It's a road closure.
Road closure.
It's like a dance floor.
In the support of serving alcohol on Main Street.
I think that's why you have to.
So all the streets, side streets be shut down for the people going on.
Just like for any other, if anyone makes sure it's closed, yes, sir.
So I would see several event applications, and I've approved several, however, when it does involve alcohol, it has to come before town council to be approved, and that's why you all are being resented with it.
What's the date again?
September 6th.
Exactly. Sorry. So I'm glad, I was saying, we said, so I'm glad you answered.
And then, this would be two different requests, we need two different motions, and, or can we do it all in one motion?
We could do it in one and just say the summer send-off and winter market event.
Okay.
Where are we? I think it's December. Four, don't worry about that.
It is December 6th.
That's what I said, December 6th.
So December 6th and September?
Six.
So, what was that, Brad?
December 6th, and I think December 6th is also Saturday.
Chief, did you have something? Is the winter, the winter, whatever it is, is it alcohol as well?
Well, we had some discussion about that. I personally do not remember that being the case in the past, but I think the thinking is that that evening, people may want to grab a drink, go out watching the Christmas parade, is why.
I just want to remind the board that we have been cut pretty deep on our overtime, so if we have alcohol, we have to provide at least presents. Just throwing that out there, we don't care to work it, but I don't want my hands slapped it coming May or April, whenever we start looking at our budgets. Just a reminder, don't mind the due.
Understood that, you know, we've received, they have, the door licenses available for 12 uses, and as of today, you can only use it once in a year, so I think it's kind of...
But I don't think if we don't use it so many times, there's a penalty here.
No, but I think that, according to the email, you know, it's just whether or not you're going to serve, you want the approval to get the.
Right, listen, the winter market starts at 10 o'clock in the morning, for most people, that's early to start drinking, so. I just be honest with you, I. And that, I don't think if, I don't think if council doesn't want that used on December 6th, it's a crisis. We want to have the market in the parade in the way, but that's what it is, that's about.
What about the fire department on the side streets?
I'm sorry, man.
What about our department on the side streets there? I don't think they charge as much, you know, staying as common.
They're all volunteer.
Yeah, volunteer, they want to do that.
So as far as police enforcement of laws, the fire department would not be able to do that.
But the police department, they'd be, how many do you want to have working at night?
It all depends, Councilman Fox, of how great they think the event's going to be. The winter fest is not a big thing, I could probably place two there. The summer kickoff would probably be, or whatever, I don't have my glasses and I apologize. The summer send-off would probably require a little bit more, because you'd have some more folks, but I just, I just want to remind the board that anytime we do alcohol on Main Street, we're pretty much required by the ABC board to place somebody up there. And we just went through, and I'm not pressing, but we just went through the fair the whole week that was on a bus, and we spent a lot of money on overtime. Kind of like the idea I had for the summer send-off, but not so much for the Christmas question. The road closure, the hay, but the, kind of alcohol.
I mean, you know, I personally agree, but I don't see it for myself.
I'll second. We got a motion, if you want to make that as a motion. I do. I'm reticent, so.
I guess.
I made a motion.
We need to have the dates on there.
Yeah, I think he was saying he doesn't want dates, just all the days, September and December.
For the summer send-off, that we allow the alcohol consumption, but for the winter market events that are not.
So my recollection from, Christmas was past, as we've not ever done that, so I don't.
They should be trying something different, you know, to see if it jumps up more business.
They can drink a cup.
I'll do it with September.
Okay, so I'll second Amy's motion.
That's like, so, and a discussion.
Do we need to include the road closures in that motion? Or can we just make a second motion for the road closure?
Or did you say you already approved those?
I have not, that's why I said for you, so if, I would recommend that you approve the road closure during your motion.
And also the road.
I will amend my second. So the motion that Danny made is that on September the sixth, we are authorizing a road closure and use of the Dora, uh, ABC license. And on December sixth, we are approving the road closure, but not the ABC license. Am I clear in saying that?
Yes.
All right, and my second is to that. Those dates, those stipulations.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of, uh, approving Councilmember Willis's proposal to, uh, allow the road closures for both events and only the September event allowing alcohol statements for Wednesday night?
Aye.
All opposed after Wednesday night? There you go, sir.
Thank you, folks.
Next, uh, local business recognition. Deep Valley Wealth, Ben Trader, and Councilmember Klein.
I don't get you with this. I can't believe it.
Is he bringing Brian?
I, I got, uh, I, I guess, you guys.
Well, you got to do that there.
You want to do this? Yeah, I'll tell you another talking.
We, we had a practice as well.
We're going to give him the coffee. And I apologize, I, I would have brought more, but we are new business, you know, in town, so. That would be great, so, uh...
This is your call, Joe.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Hold in the box, put the towel in there.
Do you have a presentation?
We can, we can be, uh...
Yeah, so we can...
Yeah, briefly, I'll, I'll just go through the bill that we normally have for new businesses, so, all right, all right, thank you for recognizing Deep Valley Wealth. Ben Trader apologizes because he's got family obligations this evening, and he couldn't attend, uh, so I'll, I'll speak on his behalf, but, um, so Deep Valley Wealth started, Ben Trader, Doc Trader's son is the, is the founder. After graduating from Roanoke College in two thousand and eight, he got into the investment advisory, uh, business. In two thousand and twelve, he started Deep Valley Wealth. So, uh, because of the relationships that have been established in this community and Roanoke West, and we've got clients, uh, all across the nation really, but because of the, the tremendous relationships that have been built, we are a growing firm. Uh, we have offices in Roanoke, Princeton, and now the Tazwell office, and that's where I'm primarily going to be. Super excited to be part of this team. We're a team of five, so a small team, and I told Ben when he's hiring the folks, he's, he's going to type, so both Tim Martin, who is our financial planner, and myself are VMI guys and Air Force guys, so told me he's certainly going to type, but, uh, in addition to me and Tim, we have Erin Muterswob, who is our operations director, and she helps us out with compliance. Anybody who's been in the investment community or been around, it's just heavily regulated, so we have her own compliance, and then Miss Becky Botts helps us with our administrative work and our, and our paperwork. So, uh, for me personally, just, just a drink, you know, I love serving the town here on the council, but to now have the opportunity to have an office on Main Street is, uh, I mean, to me, it's as cool as a small-town USA story that I can make, so, uh, super thrilled to be in the community, uh, looking forward to servicing, uh, anybody who needs assistance. The firm itself, what it does primarily is financial advising, so retirement planning, investment management. In addition to that, we do, uh, business retirement, so we are fiduciaries, so we're registered investment advisors, and that's slightly different than a broker dealer type, but, uh, part of the reason I joined the firm is because it does take on the fiduciary role, so we're looking at the best interest for the clients, not just some products, not saying that they, they all do that, but that's just a piece of it. So happy to be in Tazwell, we're going to be here for a long time, and, uh, thank you for the gifts.
Traditionally, with new businesses, can't you never climb and grill some... You got a question? That's your job.
All right, so next on the agenda is I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for Council meeting on July eighth, twenty twenty-five.
You can make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a second, any discussion? All, all in favor of approval of the minutes for Council meeting on July eighth, twenty twenty-five, states of by state and I?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by state and I? Motion carries. Next, the, uh, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of, of financial statements and the financial report for July twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Got a second, any discussion? So all in, all in favor of approval of the financial statements and financial report for July twenty twenty-five, states of by state and I?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by state and I? Motion carries. So next is the committee conference updates, Plating Commission Committee.
Who did not meet last Monday, uh, other than having a public hearing tomorrow, I was out of time and nothing's changed.
So I'm noticing toward half of the town.
Yes, sir.
So how does that work basically? That's not...
The money I paid to the contractor to tie it down, I would be putting a lien against the property.
So if that person doesn't pay the lien, are you auctioning that property?
So give it back to the court, that's what you ought to do, maybe shoot.
But what if they don't pay the lien? The individual that owned the property? You put a lien on the property? So are you going to auction the property?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Chris. So next, unfinished business. Uh, set a public hearing for land use assessment ordinance for Tuesday, September ninth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P. M. I'll entertain a motion to set the public hearing.
Motion to set the public hearing for land use assessment ordinance, Tuesday, September ninth, at seven P. M.
I'll have a second.
I'll second.
All right, I have a second, any discussion? All in favor of setting the public hearing for land use assessment ordinance for Tuesday, September ninth, twenty twenty-five, at seven P. M., states of by state and I?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by state and I? Next, motion carries. So next is the second reading and approval of sewer bonds for wastewater treatment plant upgrade ordinance and resolution.
I will motion to waive the second reading because this was covered in last month's town council meeting.
You get a second.
What's that?
I have a second, any discussion? All in favor of waiving the second reading for the agreement on wastewater treatment plant upgrade ordinance and resolution, states of by state and I?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by state and I?
I'll make a motion to approve the sewer bonds for wastewater treatment plant upgrade. I'll second. Or the, the ordinance and resolution, I'm sorry. Uh, there was, that was on a separate line.
All right, so, uh, got a second, so any discussion? All in favor of approval of the ordinance resolution for the sewer bonds for wastewater treatment, states of by state and I?
Yeah, to clarify that, because you need to pass the ordinance, and then you also need to pass the resolution, and you've got a certificate for the resolution as well in your packet, that we need, there'll need to be a separate vote for that as well. I think to be on the safe side, I would vote to pass the ordinance, but you just waived the second reading and then do a separate motion for passage of the resolution, to adopt the resolution, and then to execute the certificate resolution.
So to clarify my motion, uh, motion to approve the sewer bond and wastewater treatment plant upgrade ordinance.
Yes.
You still second?
And I still second.
All right. All in favor of approval of wastewater treatment plant ordinance, states of by state and I?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by state and I? All right, that one carries.
Now, I will make another motion to not the resolution, was that the...
I'll read the full file if you would have it in the minutes, I think that's what they probably want you to do.
Okay. But we don't, do we need a...
No, I'm not going to make, you may read the entire resolution. I think what we do is, basically, you make the motion to the resolution as attached, be adopted, and do the full file, and then you can then ask that the coverage certificate of the resolution also be noted on, to show that you have adopted it. That's, it seems like it's a lot of paperwork, but that's what they're requiring for a fifteen and a half million dollar fine resolution, so I want to make sure we cover Ts and Is and everything else we need with it.
Right. All right, so I make a motion to adopt, or, to adopt the resolution as attached, uh, the resolution to the... Make sure I'm saying this right. Resolution providing for the issuance, sale, and award, yeah, the issuance, sale, and award of the taxable general obligation water and sewer bond series two zero two five B of the town of Tazwell, Virginia, and a principal amount not to exceed fifteen point five million dollars. Here to fore, authorized and providing for the form of the details and payment thereof. And I'll second. And just to clarify, because that big number is out there, that this ordinance, this upgrade and all this has been discussed in several town council meetings for several years. We've pushed this off, uh, due to COVID, due to rising construction costs. This has been in our plan since, I believe, since I came to the town council five years ago, so, uh...
And in addition to that, three point five million dollars of it is, uh, in principal forgiveness in the loan, correct?
So I just want to put that in there.
We didn't have cost to split, we got some tax, correct?
Yes.
So again, you, an upgraded sewer treatment facility.
So that was our discussion, so all in favor of approval of the, or adopting the resolution, states of by state and I?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by state and I?
If, and if you just can't, should, really, you should probably should do a roll call vote, except if there's someone forward here, probably should do a roll call.
Okay. Easy enough, so we will go by a roll call vote to approve the resolution, so Vice Mayor Beasley.
Aye.
Councilmember Klein.
Aye.
Councilmember Fox.
Aye.
Councilmember Willis.
Aye.
I just reflect that, uh, Councilmember Hankins is absent, so it'd be a no vote, it's absent from the vote.
Right, no vote. No vote from Councilmember Hankins due to being absent? So you said there was a third part to that also, right, right?
Yeah, that was...
That covered.
That's it. You've got the coverage certificate for the resolution with your vote, the clerk can fill in appropriate information and she can sign off on it.
Okay, perfect.
Okay.
So next, uh, I don't see set public hearing for charter amendment for town manager of residency mileage extension for Tuesday, September ninth, twenty twenty-five, at seven fifteen P. M.
Let me comment a little bit on this. You all have already done this once. Already had a public hearing, already had a public discussion, already had a vote, already passed the ordinance suggestion of the requested language change in the charter. When I got or received the publisher's affidavit, which were required to submit as part of what the state code requires going to the General Assembly, in reviewing that publisher's affidavit, I noticed that it looked different than what we had submitted to the publisher for actual publishing, and it looked like a Deli Telegraph. When Susan and I investigated why the difference in what appeared in the paper, it was a formatting change, and the documents went from my office to this office, to the town hall, in PDF form, and then went to the newspaper. It converted, they went from PDF to their format to run the paper, it shifted the language, and not so much the language, the formatting, and moved the strike-through line and put it to underline the language that we intended to have removed. So when the general public saw that ad, it did not read what the council then had intended to approve and vote on. So in the abundance of caution, speaking with, um, the manager and the clerk, I said, let's just basically, we could go through this, I know by the way that the General Assembly operates, they could adopt what you all intended and actually passed, show that as being the correct version, and it could be adopted by the General Assembly without having to redo this process. However, in the abundance of caution, and I think it transferred to the public, given what was actually put in the paper, uh, given that we had the time to do this, I recommend that I recommend you tonight that we rerun that ad, make sure, and this is on me, that we do it in Microsoft Word and nothing else, so that when it goes to the newspaper and there's any format changes, that I will double check that and look before I read that, because I put that on me when I read it that night. I read it just as the paper sent it back to us, thinking it was correct, and that isn't what I sent them. But in any event, that falls back on what I read, uh, so I think we should do that again, just in the abundance of caution.
When's it got to be back in front of them?
They don't need to have it until November, uh, but I wanted, I made at least a promise to Delegate Moorefield and Senator Hackworth that we'd have this to them back in March, that we would have it done by October, so we're still fine with that. I spoke with both their legislative aides, they tend to think we didn't need to go through the process again, but I just feel more comfortable, uh, going through and making sure we have the language correct, so anybody in the public has a question about it, they can come back in and ask, and we can basically say that we're just sort of developing a standard ourselves to make sure that we have it done correctly before it goes to the General Assembly, so that's why you add that before you begin for the public hearing.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to set the public hearing for charter amendment to the town manager of residence and mileage extension for Tuesday, September ninth, twenty twenty-five, at seven fifteen P. M.
I'll make a motion to set public hearing, uh, for charter amendment to the town manager of residence and mileage extension for Tuesday, September ninth, at seven fifteen P. M.
I'll second.
That's second, any discussion? All in favor of setting the public hearing for charter amendment to town manager of residence and mileage extension for Tuesday, September ninth, twenty twenty-five, seven fifteen P. M., states of by state and I?
Aye.
All opposed, states of by state and I? All right. Motion carries. So next, we're going to new business. First is the, uh, first reading plating ordinance amendment. Uh, the town attorney has graciously agreed to read this.
And folks, I know you've heard me talk a whole lot tonight, and now you're going to get to hear me talk a whole lot. This ordinance is fairly lengthy, but it's necessary to read the whole thing since it is a first reading. This is the plating ordinance that I referenced during the, right after the public hearing, right before the public hearing earlier in the meeting. So without any further ado, this will be ordinance twenty twenty-five dash oh eight dash twelve, amendment to existing ordinance, chapter twenty-four subdivisions, Article one in general, section twenty-four dash one definitions, and Article three, plating, section twenty-four dash fifty-six generally, section twenty-four dash fifty-seven, plating required approval by management before recording sale, section twenty-four dash fifty-eight preliminary sketch, section twenty-four dash fifty-nine preliminary, preliminary plat required information, section twenty-four dash sixty, procedure for approval, section twenty-four dash sixty-one, time limitation on approval, section twenty-four dash sixty-two, approval no guarantee, section twenty-four dash sixty-three, final plat required information, section twenty-four dash sixty-four, prepared by surveyor, section twenty-four dash sixty-five, owner's statement, section twenty-four dash sixty-six, conditions of approval, limitation on recording, section twenty-four dash sixty-seven, changes on plats or data sheets, section twenty-four dash sixty-eight fees, and section twenty-four dash sixty-nine, procedure for appeal if disapproved. Be agreed by the council of the town of Tazwell, Virginia, pursuant to sections three dash eight and six dash three of the town charter, section twenty-four dash six of the code of the town of Tazwell, Virginia Code, sections fifteen point two dash twenty-two fifty-eight and fifteen point two dash twenty-two sixty-two, that hereby amends the code of the town, of the code of the town of Tazwell to enact the following provisions to chapter twenty-four subdivisions, Articles one and three, regarding definitions applicable to subdivisions and plating, and regarding to, and regarding the plating criteria and procedure requirements for survey plat submission and approval. Article one in general, section twenty-four dash one definitions. Plat includes the terms map, plan, plot, replat, or replot... Platter includes the terms map plan plot replat or replot, a map or plan of a tract or parcel of land which is to be or which has been identified by a meets and bounds description as one individual tract or subdivided into multiple tracts. When used as a verb, platter synonymous with subdivide. Subdivide is dividing a tract, parcel, or lot of land into two or more parts with the following exceptions. One, the term to subdivide shall not include a bona fide division or or partition of agricultural land for agricultural purposes or for the building site or members of family, only any such agricultural lands. Two, the town manager or his or her designated may permit the separation of a parcel from a tract and or the planning of such a tract, either as an individual parcel or as a division of one parcel into multiple parcels of land without complying with all the requirements of this chapter if the separation or plating is not in conflict with the general meaning and purpose of the chapter. Two, no new streets are required to serve the parcel. And three, the separation of plating involves a boundary adjustment between two adjacent parcels or involves a boundary location for one or more parcels. Three, the word subdivide in any directive thereof shall have reference to the term subdivision as defined herein. Four, simple subdivisions shall be in reference to division of land into two parts only. Five, boundary adjustment platter shall be in reference to any platter that involves an agreed upon adjustment of the boundary between two or more adjacent and contiguous parcels. Six, boundary location platter shall be in reference to any platter prepared for identification and location of the boundary lines on a particular property and improvements thereon. Subdivision development, a comprehensive division of one or more contiguous tracts of land into multiple smaller designated lots for the purpose of residential or commercial growth or expansion. When platted, such a division should depict a relevant engineering course, bearing, and distance data which includes, among other things, the location of and names for proposed streets, existing utilities or other easements, water courses, culverts, and drainage, public areas, parking spaces, permanent monuments, and other pertinent information for the identification and location of the land proposed for development. All of the definitions contained in this section shall remain unchanged. And I know I'm being lengthy here, but folks, for the purpose of this, those definition changes are the main we of all of this. To allow for Leanne and our town manager and Chris, our zoning administrator, to be able to have more flexibility in reviewing and then approving plaits prepared for individual owners. Article three platter, section twenty four dash fifty six generally, the only change in that section is allowing for approval by the manager or his or her designated. Previously did not allow for that, strictly the manager. Section twenty four dash fifty seven, plating required approval by management before recording and sale. Whenever any subdivision of land for residential or commercial development is proposed, and before any permit for the erection of a structure within the development shall be granted, the subdivider or his agent shall submit to the manager or his or her designated for approval, a preliminary platter proposed development including the block, street, and utilities layout. No lot within proposed development shall be sold until a final platter of the subdivision shall have been approved and recorded. Section twenty four dash fifty eight, preliminary sketch, subdivider of a proposed development may submit to the manager a preliminary sketch of the proposed subdivision development prior to his preparing and engineering, an engineered preliminary and final platter. The purpose of the preliminary sketch is to permit the manager or his or her designated to advise the subdivider whether, subdivider whether his development plans in general are in accordance with the requirements of this chapter. The manager or his or her designated upon submission of any preliminary sketch shall study it and advise the subdivider where it appears that changes would be necessary. The manager or his or her designated may mark the preliminary sketch indicating necessary changes, and any such marked sketch shall be returned to the subdivider. The preliminary sketch of the proposed development shall be drawn to a scale of at least one hundred feet to the inch. It shall show the name, location, and dimensions of all streets entering the property, adjacent to the property, or terminating at the boundary of the property to be subdivided. It shall show the location of all proposed streets, lots, parks, playgrounds, and other proposed uses of the land to be subdivided, and shall include the approximate dimensions. Preliminary platter required information. Subdivider of a proposed development or the owner of property seeking a simple subdivision, a boundary adjustment, or boundary location, shall present to the manager or his or her designated at least two prints of a preliminary layout at a scale of at least one hundred feet to the inches of preliminary platter. The preliminary platter shall include the following information unless waived by the manager due to applicable exceptions as defined and set forth in Article one of this chapter. I'll point this out, that is the most important language really in here. That's the language allows the manager to go back to Article one and definitions that I just read to give her the discretion to shorten the process quite a bit, a lot less than for me to read all of it, I can tell you that much, but it makes it a lot easier. So subsection one, name of the subdivision development, owner, subdivider, surveyor, engineer, date of drawing, number of sheets, north point and scale, if two north is used, and method of determination shall be shown, total acreage, acres of subdivided area, number and approximate area, and front end of all building sites, existing buildings within the boundaries of the tract, names of owners, and the property lines within the boundaries of the tract and adjoining such boundaries. Three, all existing platter and proposed streets, their names, numbers, and widths, existing utility and or other easements, public areas, and parking spaces, culvert strains and water courses, their names, and other pertinent data. Four, the complete drainage layout including all pipe sizes, types, drainage easement, and means of transporting the drainage to a well-defined open stream, which is, which is considered natural drainage. Five, a location map tying the subdivision to the present road system. Six, proposed connections with the existing sanitary sewers and existing water supply or alternate means of sewage disposal and water supply. Seven, all parcels of land to be dedicated for public use and the conditions of such dedication. Twenty four dash sixty, procedure for the approval. The manager or his or her designated shall discuss the preliminary platter to subdivider in order to determine whether or not his preliminary platter generally conforms to the requirements of the subdivision ordinance and of the zoning ordinance. The subdivider may be advised by eligible markets on his copy of the preliminary platter concerning any additional data that may be required, the character and extent of public improvements that shall have to be made. The manager or his or her designated may provide an estimate of costs of a performance bond, which may be required as a prerequisite to approval of the final subdivision platter, and determine the cost of required improvements and the amount of performance bond. Manager or his or her designated may consult, if they do realize, an engineer who at the expense of the subdivider shall prepare this data for the manager or preferably may require a bona fide estimate of the cost of improvements to be furnished by the subdivider. Twenty four dash sixty one, time limitation on approval. The subdivider shall not have, shall have not more than six months after receiving official notification concerning the preliminary platter to file with the manager a final subdivision platter in accordance with this chapter. Favored to do so, shall make preliminary approval, no void. The manager made on request by the subdivider grant an extension of this time limit. Section twenty four dash sixty two, approval, no guarantee. Approval by the manager of a preliminary platter does not constitute a guarantee of approval of the final platter. Section twenty four dash sixty three, final platter required information. And this is the most important part where Chris comes into play. Required information, all plaits, all plaits submitted for final approval by the manager in subsequent recording shall be clearly unless withdrawn in ink at a scale of at least one hundred feet to the inch. In addition to the requirements of the preliminary platter, the final platter shall include the following, unless waived by the manager due to applicable exceptions as set forth and defined in Article one of this chapter. One, a blank space shall be clearly designated a resort for the use of the manager to indicate approval of the platter. A certificate signed by an attorney stating forth the source of the title of the owners of the land subdivided in place of record of the last instrument and to change the title. Three, a statement to the effect as follows, subdivision as it appears on this platter is with the free consent and in accordance with the desires of the owners, proprietors, and trustees, if any. This statement shall be signed by the owners, proprietors, and trustees, if any, and shall be duly acknowledged before some officer authorized to take acknowledgement of deeds. Four, when the subdivision consists of land acquired from more than one source of title, the outlines of the various tracts shall be indicated by dashed lines and identification of respective tracks shall be placed on the platter. Five, the accurate location and dimensions by bearings and distances with all curved out on all lots and street lines and center lines of streets, boundaries of all proposed or existing easements, parks, school sites, or other public areas, the number and area of all building sites, all existing public and private streets, their names, numbers, and widths, existing utilities and those to be provided such as sanitary sewers, storm drains, water mains, manholes, and underground conduits including their size and type, water courses and their names, names of owners and their property lines, both within the boundary of subdivision and adjoining the boundaries. Six, distances and bearings must balance and close with an accuracy of not less than one in ten thousand. Seven, the data of all curves along the street front shall be shown in detail at the curve or in a curved data table containing the following, delta, radius, arc, tangent, chord, and chord bearings. Section twenty four dash sixty four, same, prepared by surveyor. Every such platter should be prepared by surveyor or engineer duly authorized by the state or by the county surveyor. Section twenty four dash sixty five, owner's statement. With the final platter, in the case of a subdivision development, the owner shall file a certificate which shall contain the following, one, a statement of the source of title of the owner of the tract, two, a meets and bounds description of the land subdivided, and three, a statement to the effect that the above foregoing subdivision as appears in this platter is with the free consent and in accordance with the desire of the undersigned owners, proprietors, and trustees, if any, and which statement shall be duly filed by the owners acknowledged and placed in record. Twenty four dash sixty six, same, conditions of approval, limitation on approval. In the case of a subdivision development, the platter shall not be approved until a subdivider has complied with the general requirements and minimum standards of design in accordance with this chapter, and has made satisfactory arrangements for the performance bond, cash or cash bond, to cover the cost of necessary improvements in lieu of construction to the satisfaction of the manager. Approval of the final platter shall be written on the face of the platter by the manager. Subdivider shall record the platter within sixty days after final approval, otherwise the platter shall become null and void unless the same, excuse me, unless the time is extended by the manager. Section twenty four dash sixty seven, changes on plaits or data sheets. No change, erasure, or revision shall be made on any preliminary or final platter or on an accompanying data sheet after approval of the manager has been endorsed and writing on the platter sheets, unless authorizations for such changes has been granted and written by the manager. Section twenty four dash sixty eight, fees. There shall be a charge for examination approval of every platter reviewed by the manager. A fee payable to the town treasurer and amount designated in section twenty three dash one twenty shall be required for each platter requested for review by the applicant. Section twenty four dash sixty nine, procedure for appeal if disapproved. If a platter is submitted to the manager for his or her approval and the manager disapproves the platter for subdivision after the platter is submitted to him or her, the subdivider may file a written notice with the mayor and his desired approval decision of the management to the town council, which notice must be filed within thirty days of an adverse decision by the manager. Upon receipt of such notice, the council shall set a date for a hearing with the subdivider. After such hearing, the council may override the recommendation of the manager and approve the platter. If the council, after a proper hearing, disapproves the platter from the subdivider, the subdivider may then appeal the decision of the council to the circuit court of the county. And that's it.
Everybody, I have pencils for my notes.
That concludes the first readings and hopefully. Thank you for your, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Brad, for reading. Do appreciate it. So we get to go through that again next month, but.
We can wait.
We can waive that reading. So.
If anybody was wondering why we waived second reading.
Yeah, that's, that's the prime example, why we waived second reading.
So next on new business is set November eleventh, twenty twenty five, town council meeting for November eighteenth, twenty twenty five, in observance of Veterans Day. So we're going to be moving it by a week.
When is it right?
I'll just entertain a motion. Unless you want to move. All right, any discussion? On favor of moving this November eleventh, twenty twenty five, town council meeting for November eighteenth, twenty twenty five, state said by saying that.
Aye.
All opposed, state said by saying that. All right, so that, you have to announce that, right, Leanne?
Yes.
So next, budget amendments.
Treasure haze.
You'll see in your council packets that I have got the proposed budget amendments for the end or close out of our fiscal year FY twenty four twenty five. Let me know if you have any questions.
Well, I think what's handy, one of the things that I don't want to say strongly with, but like, anytime you have an organization, you set a budget, and then obviously the year happens, and you have adjustments and amendments that need to occur annually. Based on what you're seeing in our preliminary budgets, are we, are we missing any big items where we're deliberately overfunding this? Please, Chief, mention overtime could be an area, I saw on EMS, I think we've got an area that we've identified for a few years on overtime. Based on your observations, do you see anything that we are routinely over?
I think.
So going into the twenty six, twenty seven year budgets.
Budget, manager Regan did look at that and projected it, so a lot of the line items, you'll see that we have slight increases to occur for those differences.
Are there some that habitually, like, we always miss the mark on something over the past few budget amendment cycles?
It's usually, I mean, as far as expenses goes, it would be equipment. But that's something you can't quite predict because you never know when a truck is going to break down, or, you know, when we need a new vehicle or a new piece of power equipment. So there, in some ways, there's not a way to predict. You don't know how, what's going to be handed to you in that fiscal year. So we do the best that we can to try to budget ahead and plan ahead based on what we've got and what we could see might happen.
One item that I would like to point out is in our revenues, we have a contingency, I'm sorry, and our expenses, we have a contingency. And that is kind of a hiding place, catch-all place, where we can allocate funds that maybe they're not, you know, needed at the very moment, but we could, we could store some funds there if, if something comes up. I would like for you all to know that our treasurer, they're recommending that we move three hundred ninety seven thousand dollars to that item. And that will become part of our fund balance as a carryover. So, very great job.
It's a solid vacuum for, you know, any emergency funds that we need. You know, that's, that's a good backstop to have in case of emergencies, so it's.
We, we spent some time talking about that, what the O R S recommends. Do you know where that puts us in our, in our total general fund? I can't remember the percentage that they were, they were recommending, twenty eight percent perhaps? Twenty three, twenty eight.
Is it V R A? Is that what you meant?
The, yes, Virginia resources.
Um, so they would like us to have a twenty five percent. Now, do I know that dollar amount right off the top of my head? I do not. But I do know that our auditors have been very pleased in the past years, and, you know, last year they said that we were very comfortable with, with what we had set back in case of, of an emergency or something should come up. They were very pleased to see how we get around.
Okay. They got me all self-conscious about questions, but, but I've got two. The, the first one that, you know, the state of Virginia, it did look like a surplus of two point seven billion. Typically, we look at maybe when we go into the audit report, I think September it was last year where we had that, that number. Based on the fiscal year, do you know what surplus we had for the calendar year? You mentioned the three sixty move it over to a contingency. Do you know what the total figure is?
So she has pre-auditors coming next week, and then three weeks later, we have our regular auditors. I think we would have a better idea after those audit adjusting entries are made, but maybe we could give an update at the September meeting.
Okay, that, that would be great. And I do want to, I want to make sure that I'm understanding this, the EMS overtime, we identified that a couple of years ago. It's on page one ninety, if you're on the PDF version, the dot center screen. The year-to-date expense on that. Could, could you explain to me what our year-to-date expenses were for overtime in the EMS department? And do we have a trend line with that? I've, I've shown the year-to-date expense of overtime for EMS is four hundred, four hundred eighty four thousand, twenty two dollars and twenty eight cents. Is, is that, am I reading that correctly?
You said EMS?
EMS overtime. Original budget, about two hundred seventy five thousand dollars. Year-to-date expense?
I don't, I don't think that's correct.
No, that's not correct, I'm sorry.
I think it must be a formula error.
Yes.
I, I don't think that's correct.
Good catch. Right.
We didn't expense that much. We actually took sixty four thousand from that to allocate it somewhere else. it somewhere else. So we underspent, um, hold on just a second, I'll try to get that pulled up, I apologize.
Somewhere around two-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars on EMS overtime?
Yes.
Okay.
So we, we didn't go over budget there, we went under.
This is a true up here, you should, the amended budget should match with the year-to-date expenses, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I, my intent wasn't to call you out on that, it's just looking at different departments, that's, that's a significant issue. All right. I appreciate it.
So, I entertain the motion to approve the budget amendments.
I'll, I'll motion to approve the budget amendments pending the correction of that.
Got motion, I'll give it a second.
I'll sit.
Any discussion? On favor of approving the budget amendments with caveat of Trevor fixing the issue or the discrepancy identified, states of West End, aye? All opposed, states of West End, nay? All right. So next, Cool Pass concerns, council member five.
Cool Pass is, uh, I couldn't just clear it. They got a lot of people going in there at the time of the day, I don't know if it has, uh, had a pass number or what, but there's people going in, that's my thing. Too much to take a cop to do everything in that box. And, you know, the language out there too is kicking ass, sorry, I've been hearing, and that's got, that's got kids out there. In my first reference to, I've already been over those Cool Passes. Uh, the other thing is, you see, Pavilion, when's, when's this Pavilion gonna be going up? I mean, we've, we've been waiting, waiting, waiting for that.
The farmers market?
Farmers market, Pavilion.
I was actually gonna give an update on miscellaneous.
Yes.
So if, do you want me to go ahead and do an now?
Yeah, I'm here, yeah.
You were asked to.
Okay. Um, so, we had our kickoff meeting, um, yesterday with the tobacco commission, and so they had said that, you know, we are able to go ahead and move forward with a request for proposals for, um, a company to supply and to construct the Pavilion. So I have been working today on a request for proposal, and I hope to get that out next week. Um, I am going to require a mandatory pre-bid meeting, so they will come here and we will go over the request for proposal, and then we will go down to the site, and they will have a chance to, you know, take measurements, to ask questions, um, and then I am going to have a tentative date to have that turned in September the nineteenth. So I was gonna give them a month to get everything, if they had questions, if they needed to come back, I was gonna give them some opportunity to have some time to work.
And also, you know, several complaints about the gravel out there not being sprayed down for dust.
I was gonna give a round four sixty up there.
And the gravel's pushed back over into, to the ditch line, because it's going on business property.
Okay. Um, so here's an update on our round four sixty.
So should we just go ahead and move to miscellaneous?
We can.
I don't know where we're at.
An update on our round four sixty project. Two weeks ago tomorrow, a crew came in at four o'clock in the morning, they dug the, the space that they needed to, and a company came in to put in what's called a wet tack. And unfortunately, the part that they brought with them to install, the company not, not the town task, um, was the wrong size. So they were not able to complete that task, and we had to reschedule. Um, and because it is being funded by the Virginia Health Department, we have to have American-made products. So we are having to wait on an American-made product to install. Um, that's why there has not been any action out there in the past two weeks, because we need that part to be able to continue the job.
Does the company not have a part?
No, they have, they do not have an American-made part on the shelf for it. So they're having to wait for it to be made.
So what's our time though?
We were told seven days, thirteen days ago.
Are there, are there other vendors that should be doing one?
We can't because this is procurement and health departments requiring that we use this vendor. Um, so, once we are able to get the wet tack installed, we will pressurize the lines, we will do our health department required testing, um, and then we will be able to complete the tie-ins and paint the road back. So I, I know that there have been issues with dust and rough roads, and I, I know that it's an inconvenience, and we are doing the best we can. Um, we have tried to start mitigating the dust with spraying road twice a day, um, once in the morning, once in the evening, and I, I know it's dry, and I know that the water doesn't last long, but we are trying.
Do they not make a chemical that helps with the dust?
I can ask that it be researched to do. I, I don't know that chemical myself.
They make a chemical because when I work construction, we use it, and it'll help with the dust.
My chance to know what it's called.
Been on a long time ago.
In the mines, we use calcium chloride for that, but that, that's also, it's salt, and then there's other effects of that, that's, uh, there's more things at weight than, than just using that for that. It's corrosive.
But it's, I mean, we put salt on the roads everywhere, so there's no difference. A little bit stronger.
Yeah.
Do you have an asset once you receive that part to test the lines, you know, make sure they're fresh? What's your timeline to maybe, once you get the part, to depending on?
It's really gonna depend on lines.
Right.
It's gonna depend on the testing for health department that we have to follow.
Do they come out and inspect?
Yes. We have an inspector on site, I won't say every day, but almost every day.
Do we know why the part was wrong? I mean, was it submitted correctly?
Yes.
Do, is there, do they bear some responsibility for the gravel we have to put back in or any chemicals that we make? I mean, is there any course of action to, to pursue them from that?
I know the company has acknowledged that this was an error on their side. Um, as far as any type of restitution type, they have not made any indication to me.
I mean, I think that, I think that's worth pursuing to them, um, because, you know, we, it has cost manpower, it has caused issues.
So if we're looking at seven days and it's fourteen days and it still don't happen, where are we?
Unfortunately, when I talked to the supplier yesterday, they didn't have another update. But I did talk to them yesterday.
So we don't know if they're actually creating it right now, or are we in some queue that we have no idea?
Again, to, to what I was told from our supplier is it was being made and we would have it instead of days. That's what they were told from the manufacturer.
So if there's a, I, I would be curious, talking to, that, so the health department's procurement is what's put pigeonholed us into this supplier, right? But in those procurement, four of them each have written contracts, they send them home, part they don't deliver, timely, like, does, have we asked the health department if they have an alternative course of action? So he, okay, if this supplier goes out of business, then we're, we're moving over to these. And typically, I think in procurement, like, at these levels, there's, there's several vendors that it can't choose from, because, because of these reasons, you can't be dependent on one supplier, and something happened with them, they don't deliver any of your stuff. Have we asked them that?
He didn't seem to, he didn't seem to offer that as, as kind of option. We haven't reached out and asked.
Yeah, can we ask the question?
But he, he did not offer, and the, the health department representative was actually here the day that this happened, so, um, I would like to reach out and ask.
Yeah, is there any way you can pass off that then, that, past the tiny village, right there where they stopped and it grew up two or three times? Big bay right there, past where, you're getting rock right there.
Until the lines are pressurized, like, we, we would just have to tear that right back out. Um, so I, I don't know that that's a very feasible option.
I don't think so. Coal patch would fit in there, I mean, it's...
Coal patch would last a week, dude.
So, so let me ask you this, so if we opened up that whole road, it can't be any rough with the section you have torn, that you have, you know, marked off from hardies to the light, why can't we just open the road back? People are optioning which way they wanna go. It's not gonna be any different than riding that section of a road.
Um, we'll certainly ask our public work director and see if we can open it or...
I hope not.
See if you can lay it or put another layer of gravel in it to make it even further. I mean, somehow...
That's what, that's what we're discussing.
Sure is.
I mean, we gotta do something, because it's, I've seen cars kind of go off into gravel, they come back and it's pushing the car over, and it could hit another vehicle.
Yeah, maybe they need to slow down.
Yeah. Do what?
Maybe they need to slow down.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to slow down. My tires would go all pieces.
I have one more thing on this one, this is a benefit of business. So last week, I attended the tourism summit over in Woodfall, and one of our own businesses, House of Taylor, was awarded for the best new tourism business with accommodation. And I just thought that we needed to mention that and, and recognize their accomplishment there.
That's good. Let's see what names.
All right, so, uh, now we're going to our miscellaneous public comments section.
I think it's Mr. Gary Shortridge, I hope I'm saying the first name, I don't have my glasses on.
Should be Timothy.
Okay, okay. I apologize, I ain't got my glasses on, Tim, I didn't see anybody.
Didn't see anybody.
You can say your name, address, and once you start, you'll...
Timothy Shortridge, Towne, Virginia, one, well, I said they changed from nine-one-one address, it used to be one-eleven, one-thirty-five, previous street. Ain't got any houses on that street, but anyways. Mr. Fox can tell you. I spoke to him. I spoke to Mr. Hankins, I don't know where he's at tonight, but the dust, the dust is so terrible to me. You can't, I know the work has to be done, I know it has to be done. Don't get me started on her.
Shouldn't point at her.
Well, don't get me started on the town manager, because she has lied. She has told people that she was, she told Mr. Hankins, she's told Dave Fox that they were putting water on it. You know how many times we saw water? Three times, maybe four, no, I'm gonna say three, three at the most. Your vehicles are covered in dust, your Porsches are covered in dust. It's even in mom and dad's house. Right off of Tin Castle, the grass is gray, it ain't green, it's gray. We know it's got to be done, but do something to keep the dust down. And one of the things that should have been done was put, it's work zone, it's active work zone. Why can't it be twenty-five miles an hour? If people go slower, you're not stirring up as much dust. Is that not common sense? You, I think you said that.
Yeah.
I mean, that's common sense.
I think twenty-five would still be a bit much through there, especially with...
Maybe twenty.
Yeah, I, I think it should be lower, but the problem we've run into with, with changing speed limits is unless it comes from VDOT.
No, 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 don't go to VDOT, we've been to VDOT. VDOT says that they do not set the speed limits in a town limits.
That's not true, Mr. Shortridge.
Well, they have to do a study. Now, they, the town could go and do a construction zone and could limit maybe, but as far as VDOT's saying that they are not the one, they have to get them approved, but at construction, the town, they very well may be correct.
And we talked about that earlier.
Yes, but, but as far as a regular speed limit.
And they raised, they raised the speed limit on Tin Castle to forty miles an hour. I've got almost hit a couple of times pulling it out. Mom and dad's eighty-three years old. They all on the sky. You've got streets, you've got driveways that come out on that road.
Oh, I agree.
It's, it's, it shouldn't be forty miles an hour.
So who said that, would that be a failure?
That was VDOT, and I, I agree wholeheartedly when they say it's about the forty mile an hour.
Because people's gonna do forty-five. Some people's gonna push it to fifty coming through there. It's, it's crazy.
But on returning that, we don't do a lot of speed enforcement out there to get tickets, and when I say we don't do speeding enforcement, we don't get a lot of tickets, but I can't, I cannot make myself do forty. I agree with Mr. Shortridge, forty is too much to do there, but, but that was a VDOT study that was done years before I ever came to the town casual, and that's what it's...
I don't think it changed it like six years ago, maybe seven years ago.
I've been here now, and Chief Cooper was here when that was actually changed.
So it's no longer...
Yes.
But, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous.
I, I agree. So, we talked today also about ensuring that the guys were gonna put water down at least twice a day, I think.
They're putting water down, but...
I think that's...
It's not enough.
Is it a weather issue? What, what are you sensing is the problem?
The dust.
No, no, I know the dust is the problem, but what do you sense is wrong with the method that the town's utilizing to mitigate the dust? Is it a volume of water, or are we not putting...
They're not, they're not putting enough water down.
Okay.
You've got to put water down. And people come through there, they, they blast through there, I mean, it's, they...
Yeah.
I mean, it's, the gravel's are thrown up on the side streets. They're turning up Perry Street, we got, dad had to get gravel's out of the yard. He went to mow big chunks of gravel. Didn't, it wasn't intentionally put in the yard, but I think it was thrown up there from vehicles.
I went out there and checked, used, I don't know if you saw me out there going up the street.
I didn't.
Okay, it's, it's dusty, don't get me wrong, it's dusty and the gravel's thrown to the right when the vehicles come through. You know, got, got vehicles goes there the right way, and you got vehicles that don't give a darn, I mean, they fly through there and dump dust and gravel everywhere.
I refuse to go. I would go that way, but I'd go all the way back around. I'm not driving that mess. I'm not gonna do it. And there's got to be something done. Just put water, just put gravel on, but I mean, they...
We'll, uh, we'll work to ensure that, you have them going twice a day, maybe we look at three times a day, maybe a good day to...
But you got a water hose, it's about, what, that big?
I don't have a...
I think you, y'all use it to flush the lines out, drain lines out.
We have a big water tanker on, and somebody's, has that drinking water.
So if it's a quantity issue and we just need to put more of it, that's fixable.